Welcome, everybody. I want to welcome counsel. Good evening to everybody. So let's go ahead and stand and let Mr. Lesher, if he would, to do the opening prayer and then the plaudillations on the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Will you join me in prayer? Almighty and everlasting God, you have given us all good things: food and shelter, community and companionship, wisdom and empathy. Make us mindful of the needs of our neighbors, that we may be your hands in helping them to find or keep safe and adequate housing within our community. We give you thanks for the work of those in our community who make it their mission to provide such assistance to those in need, including the work of the Neighborhood Service Center and the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Guide us to be your hands in the world to our neighbors and guide our work tonight. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
From me for the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Good job. Okay, get here. You definitely don't want this computer to fall. That's her. Okay. Okay. All right, tonight's agenda is before us. February 8th. Are there any deletions, additions, relations, corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, let's move on to minutes. So minutes of January 11th are before us. Counsel has had a chance to take a look at all that. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Did everything look good? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. Next on the agenda is disbursements for February 1st and February 8th. Counsel has had a chance to review the disbursements. So are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the disbursements? Everything look okay on that council? Hearing none, the chair moves that the disbursements be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, that's good. All right. All right, now, now we're going to have an update. The Neighborhood Service Center, we're going to have an update with, I think, is Marilyn Neal, is she here?
Yes, she is.
With us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's great. There she is. How you doing?
Fine, and thank you all for having me this evening.
That's good. Is it, is it any way that you might be able to turn your volume up just a little bit?
Okay.
If you can.
That better?
Yeah. You might just have to get a hair closer, that's all.
Okay, would you like me to call in? Think it'd be better if I call in?
What do you think, Jess? Can everybody hear her okay?
It's, it's better when she's closer to the mic. That does help.
I think you just need to scoot up.
Okay, I'm scooting. So are you ready, Jessica?
Yep, yep. That'd be great. Yeah, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so in addition to reintroducing the Neighborhood Service Center so that everyone is sort of up to speed on what we are currently doing, also want to use this opportunity as a repurpose of the Ridgeway Shelter. You can go to the next slide, please. So Ridgeway, a little background on Ridgeway. It opened in 1991, housed, fed, and provided 30 to 45 men and women each year with case management services pre-pandemic. A few years back, Ridgeway transitioned into a low-barrier shelter. As a low-barrier shelter, Ridgeway no longer was able to require criminal background checks or drug testing for admission. Pre-pandemic, Ridgeway provided three beds for women and three beds for men. However, during the pandemic, service levels dropped to one resident per room, adjusting based on shelter environment. Purpose of the shelter is to move homeless individuals toward permanent and transitional housing. And with that comes low-barrier drawbacks to, to the shelter. We noticed an increase in resident, on-resident violence, onsite drug and alcohol abuse activity, need for a police presence to resolve resident disputes. Housing individuals with current arrest warrants were something we had not done in the past, and staff and resident safety concerns. So with that being a low-barrier shelter, it also put at risk, our staff more at risk for conflicts with, with the residents. So some of the shelter gaps we have had to try to change services for was consistent staffing for inclement weather and holidays. It became a problem having enough staff coverage during those times. On-site security, lack of certified onsite support to address resident needs, the influx of customers that need a wide range of health and substance abuse services have been more relevant in the past, I'll say, year and a half. So there are several ways NSC addresses homelessness prevention, many of which you support and could not be done without you, and this is the slide up now. So first, we have an inclusion of congregate living space. This is known as Webb's Hope. Rent is $320 to $400 per month based on income. Webb's Hope started in 2018. It's located at 36 Southwest Street. It houses 23 individuals who have moved to self-sufficiency, and 50% were transitioned from homelessness, whether it was shelters, surf count, couch surfing, or family homes. Secondly, opening of permanent housing. And this is possible through the collaboration with Talbot County, the Community Services Development Grant, and the Neighborhood Service Center. This grant is the homeless initiative, and this project is located at 6 South Street. It's now complete. It provides housing for three low-income households, two being individuals, one being a family unit. And other affordable housing units under this subsidiary of the Neighborhood Service Center are small, for small families, located at 104A and 104B and 117 Port Street. These properties have always been housed by those that had left our Ridgeway Shelter. And number four is our two-gen whole families approach. This initiative became under an executive order by Governor Hogan in 2018. And this initiative is where families receive case management, goal planning to break the generational poverty cycle, and we are using the family unit at 6 South Street as a designated property for a two-gen family at this time. Number five is our emergency services program. And this allows us to serve individuals that are low-income, homeless, and at risk of homelessness, and those financially affected by COVID-19. Then we have our ERAP 1 and ERAP 2. And I will just say that that is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program because I see that Mary Kay will follow me, and I don't want to spill her story before she gets a chance to do it. So it is in your packet, and you can read ours later. Homeless Solutions Program, number eight, helps us fund, helps us fund primarily support to the local continuum of care. So what that is, is for people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. HSP or Homeless Housing Solutions Program is stabilizing services, such as rapid rehousing, outreach, and emergency hotel placement. And number nine is reuse of Ridgeway for affordable housing for a large family. So in 2019, Neighborhood Service Center was, was granted approval to utilize Ridgeway Shelter located at 120 North of Roar Street for the purpose of, other than a transitional shelter. And we believe that this is, this can best be used as an affordable housing property for a large family. As you know, affordable housing is, comes very few in the county and surrounding counties. And we find it very hard to house our larger families. So our mission stays the same, our goals are the same. NSC's homeless prevention service model will be enhanced with the repurpose of Ridgeway. And thank you, Jessica. So this fourth, go back one, Jessica. Thank you. So Ridgeway was built in 1920. It's located again at 120 North of Roar Street, sets on 1,384 square feet. It's equipped with a large enclosed porch backyard, washer dryer, full kitchen, pantry, dining room, living room, powder room, three, bedroom, one den, and a large bathroom. So why affordable housing for a large family is the best use of this space for the following reason. One, Talbot Interface Shelter continues to expand its homeless shelter services. Two, reuse of this space is still within NSC's mission of working toward eliminating poverty by empowering families and individuals to become self-sufficient. Three, Talbot County, Maryland is in the need of more affordable housing units that are set so that low-income families can be housed, prevent eviction, and thrive. And four, the reuse helps NSC meet its goals of preventing homelessness, increasing affordable housing units, assisting families towards self-sufficiency, and removing barriers of property. So next slide. So this slide is just to give you an idea of the relocation of funding currently funded by Talbot County. So why does NSC, NSC still need funding after the closure of Ridgeway? We need funding for the continuation of our bilingual emergency services coordinator position. Grant funding is set to run out in September 2022. Continuation of food pantry coordinator position to run out, funding to exhaust in 2022. Additional rehab, ERAP Office Assistant. This program is in need of additional support due to high volume and services provided. Current funding is capped on salaries. Contract support services for emergency services and overall office support, overall operating budget as well. The financial information for each position outlined in this slide can be found in your packet. So these are the services that we are currently providing at the Neighborhood Service Center. We have a two-gen whole family case management. And, and this, this program is, is awesome because it's geared to stop poverty in its, its current state. So if we're working with three generations or two generations, our hopes are that, that, that last generation, the poverty will stop there, and they will be able to be self-sufficient going forward with their families. We have affordable housing. We have, of course, the Webb's Hope, which is 23 rooms. We have the duplex at 104, a single-family dwelling at 117, and the properties located at 6 South Street. In addition, we help with our clients obtaining birth certificates and identification cards, both of which is needed to be gainful with employment. We're working with Talbot Family Network with career pathways, working with youths ages 16 to young adults at age 25. I, I, we're receiving funding for burial assistance. This is coming from our Community Services Block Grant Chairs funding. We, we noticed that there were several families in the community that were unable to put their loved ones away based on not having insurance or not having enough insurance. So we seeked approval from the state to move funds from one of our under-providing line items to be able to assist with burial assistance. And that's where we have assisted one person. We were granted a total of $32,000 to work toward the burial of COVID-19 patients. We do medical assistance, which consists of helping seniors fill gaps for prescriptions. We have COVID-19 relief under CSBG cares. We have relief under CDBG cares, HSP cares, and LIHEP cares are all the programs assisting with COVID needs. We continue to do our emergency food package. We also, of course, have our ERAP assistance, our summer program, our after-school program, which is now virtual for the second consecutive year. We have eviction prevention payments, first month rent, heating assistance. We have assisted veterans with minor home repairs, and those entering back into employment and needs of car repairs. We have also assisted those because those are barriers in the county, especially we know transportation is a big deal. So it's, it's very hard, not just the county, but on the shore, to be employed if you don't have your own transportation. We have, for over 30 years, administered the Maryland Energy Assistance Program. We assist with temporary hotel placements. For the second year, we are working with seniors throughout the county with our mobile food pantry. We have on-job training for homeless individuals. We do rapid rehousing, which is, we take a person out of a homeless situation and help them find housing. We pay their first month's rent security deposit, and we work with them until they're able to stand on their own. We can work with them for a minimum of two months to two years. And, and most of the time, it's three months. We do have people because of getting sick or a child getting sick come back once we have exited them from the program and need assistance. But we can assist them for a total of 24 months. We have our Responsible Fathers Program. It has been successful. We're in our second year. And this program allows us to work with returning citizens. And it's, it's been a great program. We've, we've been able to, through our rental properties, provide housing to those exiting incarceration that would not probably have a chance to have their own housing. And that removes the barrier of housing, which we have learned that if you can keep a person housed, that is one step toward them not re-entering to incarceration. So we're excited about that. We have our rental assistance, our senior employment program, and utilities. And next slide. So this slide is sort of self-explanatory. I will correct a mistake. You'll see donors to the far left and should have been grantees. But it just looks at, shows you where we are with our spending thus far. And our fiscal year ends in June of this year. It, it runs July 1st to June 30th. And so you, as you can see, most of the funds, you can see they dwindle. But I do want to bring attention that we have good, good support from the community. Of the funding you see here, $2,266,754.14 came from the community donations and went back into making sure our low-income population can thrive. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Neal. That's great. Start off with Mr. DeVilia. This is, this is, this is your committee here.
So yes, thank you, and thank you for a wonderful presentation. This discussion around the Ridgeway Shelter, I, I know that there should probably be some questions from it. First thought I had was, you know, during these difficult times, why would we be reducing beds when, in reality, we, we have an individual that is causing us to just do that, that, that person themselves? So I know Ms. Neal has done an excellent job looking at other, other options on how to better serve the community. And having somebody be transitional, coming from one shelter into a more permanent shelter, and then getting out on their own is a big win. And that's what we're striving for and what Ms. Neal does so well. One thing I'm really proud about Talbot County, and it's, I think we're, we're forced on it because of the revenue cap. There are so many different foundations, charities, and giving individuals and organizations that help the NSC and just help Talbot County in general. And we couldn't do it without them, and we couldn't do it without the business community. Ms. Neal made a connection with a local business that was able to provide a vehicle to an individual at no cost so that they could transport themselves to work. And that, that's a requirement on the eastern shore. You have to have a vehicle. You have to have transportation to get to work. So those are the connections that she makes to, to make sure that the organization stays strong, stays well, and services are being provided. One thing that she didn't mention is with this change here is the ARC is also coming down to Port Street, and they're going to be offering, I believe it's seven, no, no load, no, no, no barrier units in there. So there is going to be some additional units that are coming to the area soon, whenever that, that project gets going. And we had them at the last Neighborhood Service Center board meeting so that we could coordinate and work with the neighbors and what's going on down there. So I, I, I'm very proud. This is an incredibly challenging time when the community needs support and services, and this is the organization that steps up and does it. And Ms. Neal is the leader of that. She leads an excellent team. So I, I don't have any questions. Obviously, I've sat through this and heard it all. I just wanted to express my gratitude to her, to working through such challenging times and making sure everybody is, is being fed, has their electric on, has some heat, and have a place to go. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilia. Ms. Price? Mr. Lesher?
Just, just a clarifying question on the Ridgeway House. In, in transitioning this to, to affordable housing, is this, will this be affordable rental housing? Will Neighborhood Service Center continue to hold the title to this? Or just, just explain how, how that's, how, how that transition is going to work?
Yes, sir. It will. The Neighborhood Service Center will continue to hold the deed to this house. And we really can't do anything else. It was donated to the Neighborhood Service Center to address homeless situations in the county. So it is my understanding that it, we, we can't sell it, nor, nor do we want to. We want to use it to address the need of affordable housing in the county. I hope I'm answering that. If not, please.
That makes perfect sense. I just wanted to clarify on that, and, and thank you. And clearly, you've, you've, you've thought carefully about how, how best to use this resource to serve the, the needs of the community. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Price?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Ms. Neal, thank you again for a stellar presentation. You've outdone yourself. Once again, thank you for laying out the course of action for the Neighborhood Service Center. Neighborhood Service Center has been in existence, I believe, since 1968. At, at one time, it was the only game in town when it came to homelessness and prevention, poverty prevention in Talbot County. Talbot County designated Neighborhood Service Center as our anti-poverty affiliate. They've been acting in that role, I believe, since 1994, 95, when that resolution was enacted. And has been doing a, a wonderful job, working as a quasi-governmental agency, addressing homelessness and poverty prevention and hunger and a number of other things that she laid out in her slide presentation that they have taken on over the years. Some counties have a, a public cap, that's Community Action Partnership. We don't have one here. They are a private cap. But they still function to address these most vulnerable citizens in, in the county and keep them afloat as best they possibly can. I like what you, what you're proposing here for Ridgeway. I, I know before Mr. DeVilia, when I was on, on the board there, this has been something that you presented to the board a number of times. And I think now that you have the, the South Street property up and running, and that you have the Webb's Hope facility up and running, it's now the right time to go ahead and transition or repurpose or whatever term you want to use, that, that Ridgeway property into a, an affordable rental, rental property for, for larger families to use. So I think it's an appropriate time to do so. You have those other two properties up and running, and they seem to be doing very well from all accounts that I've seen. So I, I certainly support the, the, the transition or repurposing of Ridgeway that you laid out for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Ms. Price is having some audio. She's, she's trying to be on her phone. Can you hear us, Laura?
Yeah, okay. So I switched over now.
Okay, good, good.
I'm just trying to listen to the meeting on the, on the phone just because I'm having some audio connections. But if I need to speak, I guess I just need to speak on the computer. So that aside, Marilyn, thank you very much for everything that you do. It's just amazing how long that you've been doing this and that you still seem to, you obviously have a passion for, for what you're providing to the citizens. We appreciate all of the information and looking forward to, you know, hearing the next update on the Rental Assistance Program. There's definitely some bills going into Annapolis on that kind of stuff. So it's, it's just so vital and important. And I appreciate Frank serving on this board and staying really involved and being our liaison for that. So thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Price. And I, and I just want to follow up too, Frank, with being on that board and doing a good job to keep us up to date and being involved in the community. And Ms. Neal, I, I, you said something at the very beginning. You said a couple sentences. You said you couldn't do this without the council. And you best believe we couldn't do this without you and your team. So you, you, you need to pat yourself on the back. So this is a team effort to be doing this, and we appreciate everything you do, that's for sure. So you, you've done a great job, and we're proud to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, well, thanks a lot. Have a great evening, and we appreciate everything you do. Okay. Next on the agenda, council, is the emergency rental assistance. And I think Mary Kay is going to bring us up to speed on that.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to give you an update. In May of 2021, the council was notified that we had received $2,439,498 to administer the Department of Housing and Community Development grant for Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The funds cover rental and utility assistance and other housing and service-related costs and program administration costs. As Marilyn Neal stated, Talbot County partnered with the Neighborhood Service Center. They complete the screening, determine eligibility, issue the funds, and provide report information to the county. And to date, they have distributed over $1.65 million to approximately 600 beneficiaries. That's about 68% of the budget is already been spent on this program. And the Neighborhood Service Center is doing a great job in getting the word out and helping the individuals get their applications processed. Due to the high percentage of rental assistance, we are requesting a budget modification to reallocate some of the utility and other housing-related funds into the rental category so we can continue to provide that assistance. In December of 2021, we were notified that the county would be receiving a second award of $1,678,514 for ERAP 2 to continue to ensure housing stability for families and individuals at risk of becoming homeless or experiencing utility cutoff due to impacts of COVID. The ERAP 2 grant will begin upon expiration of ERAP 1 in September of 2022 and will terminate in September of 2025 or when the funds are exhausted. Citizens can log onto the Neighborhood Service Center website at nsctalbotmd.org for application and instructions. And they can also log onto the talbotcovid19.org or rentrelief.maryland.gov sites for more information and eligibility checklist associated with ERAP. The documents are available in both English and Spanish. If you go onto the Maryland website, they provide the statistics as to where the county is and how much we have spent and how many homes we have served. And they also break it down into gender, race, ethnicity, age, income, and other categories where you can provide, find additional information on the ERAP program. We have appreciated the opportunity to support our citizens that have been negatively affected by COVID. And we value the efforts of the Neighborhood Service Center and look forward to continuing our community partnership with the Neighborhood Service Center. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. But it's a great opportunity where we received over $2 million the first round and just under $2 million the second round. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with the public to make sure they get the assistance they need.
Thank you, Mary Kay. What a great presentation and appreciate all you do. So just going to open up to council, Ms. Price? Uh-oh. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Here I am. Just got it jumbled. Thank you, Mary Kay. It's nice to have you working with us. You're doing a great job at working on these grants. And of course, we always have staff that's really good at that. But appreciate that. As I mentioned before, there's several bills, at least three or four, that have come before Mako regarding rental assistance. And it's good to know that these funds are available so that people can stay in their homes. And then it is their home, even if they're renting. That is still somebody's home. So thank you for all of that, and thank you for the update.
Yes, Mary Kay Verteri. Good seeing you again. It's always a pleasure to have you in our presence. Yeah, ERAP is a big deal, as Mr. Callahan always says. Big deal. It's a big deal. And it's a big deal for a number of reasons. It keeps persons with a roof over the top of their head. But it also allows those funds to go into the hands of those property owners and landlords who have been also burdened by COVID. You've got to remember that, yes, COVID has impacted the renter, but COVID has also impacted the homeowners and property owners who are renting these parcels out, these rooms and homes out. So this income does make its way into their pocket as well so they can pay their property tax and pay whatever other water bills and so forth. Because water bills cannot be transferred into the renter's name. It has to stay within the property owner's name. So they're still have to pay those things as well. So again, it's a great program. Wish we didn't need it, but we do. And it certainly underscores why Ms. Neal was alluding to the fact that she needs to keep those personnel on board. When you're trying to manage $1.21 million of funding, you need the people there to do that. So, you know, council should take notice to that request that she had put before us to help out keeping those people in their employment. So again, thanks, Mary Kay. Really appreciate it.
Mr. DeVillea?
I will just echo Mr. Pack and everybody else's words. Grant writing is an art, but then there's all the extra work that goes in after the fact of monitoring and proving what was done after the fact with the money as it's going out and tracking all of that. So I appreciate all of those who are involved in that. I know that there's a lot of county staff that goes into this. But again, this is what's keeping people in their home. And when you lose your home, it's impossible to get back. It takes a lot of work. And if you're able to write a small check and keep somebody in there for a month or two, and it makes a big difference, and it really does. And I know that you're not going to get the thanks from the landlords that you should be getting. But it is a great benefit, and it's been challenging. There's been a lot of need. And I know with Ms. Neal, I've only received one complaint so far that, from a landlord, who was upset about the time that it took to get the money in their hand. And I called down to Ms. Neal, and the file was open on her desk with a check in there, and she was just waiting to call and let them know. So she is stretched as thin as it gets. And I appreciate how difficult and challenging that is. Money challenges are extremely hard on everyone. So I appreciate your hard work in getting this and writing the work so that we get the funds as well as tracking and following through. So thank you all very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. DeVillea. Mr. Lusher?
Thank you. Thank you for the good news about this fresh infusion of $1.6 million into a second round of this program. That's really encouraging, and it will have a big impact in the community. So can you tell us, following up on Frank's account, about how we're doing with turnaround time in getting those checks out to the community?
That's probably a little better question for Marilyn than myself because they actually process those. But to Frank's point, I've only had one individual of the nearly 1,000 that have applied to date that has called me with a concern about the time. And that individual had documentation that still needed to be submitted. So his application was incomplete. So we got him on track, and Marilyn got him, you know, everything figured out and moving forward and was able to process his immediately as well.
Mr. Lusher, to that point as well, there's, the challenge with it is you need some documentation from the landlord, but you also need some documentation from the tenant. And when people get behind, they're not always inclined to answer the landlord's phone calls. So there has been a little bit of challenge with that. But once they realize what's happening and everybody agrees, it seems like the process is sped along much faster than. But those are the only hiccups I've heard so far.
Yes. And to answer Mr. Lusher's question, the turnaround time is normally within 30 days. And that is because we don't get all the appropriate documentation in the beginning. And we're seeing, golly, it seems like all I do is sign ERAP checks. But I don't even know how many they get a day. But another thing that slows the process down, and Mary Kay can attest to that, is the first three, four days of the month is all going into grant reporting. So we have to sort of shut that program down in order to get the reports needed to Mary Kay so that her and her team can get them to the state. So we lose about four days a month before we can get back into everything. So about 30 days, sometimes sooner. As soon as all the information is in there, sitting on my desk waiting to be signed off on.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. And I just want to commend Mary Kay and all her hard work in working with Neighborhood Service Center and getting these checks out to the people that need them. And like Mr. Pack said, the landlords. You know, I'm very fortunate, we're very fortunate. My family, you know, supports in surrounding counties a bunch of rentals. And, you know, workforce housing means a lot. And I'm proud to be a part of that. And I see firsthand what it does and encourages the landlord to keep going. Because there's been many, many times in the last couple of years that we have been, you know, patient and waiting. Because we, you know, like Mr. DeVillea said, there's nothing worse than being backed up with rent two, three months and just being patient with the person and not putting them out. So I have firsthand experience with all that. And we've been in that business for, you know, 40 years. And it's people like us and people like the council and people like these committees and Mary Kay and these funds that really mean a lot and keep these people in their homes. And that's what it's all about. And it takes people like all of us as a team to make sure that these people have a home. And, you know, it means a lot. So I really appreciate everybody's effort on this because there's one thing we don't want to do. We don't want to have a situation where we have to have people move out. Because that just creates more problems. So thanks a lot, everybody. I appreciate that. Okay. Any last words, Mary Kay? Are you good?
I'm good. I just want to note, we've talked a lot about rent, but this also is for utility assistance and some other housing assistance. So if anyone is having, experiencing any issues, they should reach out to the Neighborhood Service Center and see if we're able to assist them.
Okay. Appreciate it. So we're going to, if you want to stay on, that's fine. But we're going to move on to economic development in that little smiling face right there. Yep. How are you, Ms. Cassandra? How are you?
I am very well. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Excellent. And I have a PowerPoint. So can I share? Or Jessica, are you going to share it for me? You want to try and share, and if it doesn't work, then I'll jump on in. If you can't do it, let me, just let me. Well, my share button, of course, is gray. So you'll have to do it.
You keep having problems with that button.
There we go. I got to share now. Hang on.
There you go.
Hey, I got it. All right.
Perfect.
So let me get over here and start my slideshow from the beginning. Right. So good evening, County Council. And Preston Callahan, thank you so much for having me on the agenda. It's really fortuitous that I am following Ms. Marilyn and Mary Kay on this because we're talking about two sides of the same coin. And the work that they're doing to support our residents and citizens in need is very important. And the work that we're doing to invest in the business community is important to provide jobs. And also, as Frank pointed out, the fill-in profit support that the businesses provide. So I, you know, it looks like we made this presentation to go together, but it has been a year of positive returns for our investment in the business community. And I'll just touch briefly on this. We have given out a number of small business grants, 3.27 million to be exact. And that started in June of 2020 with the CARES grants and through December 2021. Now, we have had a number of state grants that includes restaurants, lodging establishments, nonprofits, online sales and teleworking. And so over half of this 3.27 million was given out in 2021. So we gave our very last grants out in December. We had a little extra CARES money left over, and we made some grants to businesses. So altogether, that's been a very successful program. And with four and a half people on the staff, we have done a yeoman's work and partnered with the finance office on this. But we do more than that. And so as you'll recall, we had a big flood in October. And a number of our businesses in coastal areas got flooded. So on that Saturday, I visited as many as I could find and called the rest. And then the governor declared a state of emergency, which enabled our businesses to qualify for emergency grants. So a total of 10 Talbot County businesses applied for those emergency flood grants through Maryland Capital Enterprises, which is located in Salisbury. And we do a lot of work with them with microgrants. And none of those businesses were approved and received grants for a total of $160,000 to offset the cost of the damages. And of course, that supplements any insurance that they had. A number of businesses, including Lowe's Warp, really sustained equipment damage. And also, they had damage to their rooms. So those grants were, they touched all of our towns except Easton, so Oxford, St. Michael's, and all in the Bay 100. There was no real flooding in Tillman, interestingly. But that really blanketed the county coastal areas with those grants. Also, you will recall that we have a small incentive fund that we put money into every year. And in 2019, at the end of the year, we executed a grant agreement with Afina Pharma. And I just wanted to give you a report on what they were able to accomplish with our matching grant, matched the state, one Maryland grant, or Advantage Maryland grant. So we invested $15,000. Easton invested $15,000. And then there was a $300,000 grant from the state to support this project. So they have completed their $7 million expansion. And they purchased the two adjoining facilities and have created a 27-acre pharmaceutical manufacturing campus. Now, this is a juggernaut when it comes to economic development for us. So they're based there in Easton on Industrial Park Drive. And they have hired 156 hourly and salaried employees, bringing their total to 270. And that's a 66% growth. And they're continuing to hire. So this is a great business for us. This has not been a business that's been affected by the pandemic. But your county dollars helping support this project is keeping people employed. Now, as you will see and have seen, we are becoming really adept at leveraging our partnerships to provide business assistance. And we have numbers of partners. And I've just listed a few of them here. Small Business Development Center, the Midshore Regional Council, the Eastern Shore Regional GIS Cooperative, Beacon, Upper Shore Workforce Investment Development Board, and the Maryland Department of Commerce. So let's just look at the Small Business Development Center. So in their fiscal year, which runs from October to September of 2021, they provided free and confidential counseling to 31 businesses in Talbot County. And typically, these are small businesses that need help with their business plan, that need help with financing, whatever they need to get up and running. Then we refer to the Small Business Development Center. And they sign a confidentiality agreement and are counseling those businesses. I keep up with them, of course. But they're receiving their business assistance from the Small Business Development Center. So they also provided 99 training events. And that supported 816 jobs. And they had five successful loan applications for a total investment in Talbot County of $432,931. Now, this is another slide that is showing just what's going on in the first quarter of fiscal year 2022. And I can tell you that client number is low because we go over once a month, all of the clients that are active with the Small Business Development Center. We just did that this week, and there are more than 15. But again, But again, in the first quarter, $130,000 of loans for two different businesses. And of course, supporting a number of jobs there. Now, when the Small Business Development Center connects with Talbot County businesses, that's important to us because, first of all, over the past two years, we have helped fund them, and that will be in my budget request again this year. They asked for $6,000, and that is what we have been able to give to them through the last couple of years. And you can see it's well, money well spent. We also have added our office hours. The SBDC Councilor Greg Bar Two, who is also assigned with Rich Leppler to Talbot County, is at Bay Street every Tuesday from 12 to 4:00. And so if we have a business that needs a place to meet with them, we provide that within our offices. We have to expand that at some point if we ever have additional office space that we can share with them. They're currently sharing my office. And then I referred to the training opportunities that they give. They give numerous webinars. They were in-person events, now webinars, and they will do custom events. So if I need something for my businesses, I can ask them to do a webinar just for Talbot County businesses. Largely, we promote what they're doing, but they will do a custom and have done, particularly during COVID, custom creations for us. And then, of course, as I mentioned, I do a regular update with them and track our businesses to make sure that people are staying on track. Now, another project that we have talked about over and over is the Eastern Shore Recovery Project. And part of that is the Business Sentiment Survey. And I'm not going to talk about the whole project, but I am going to talk about tonight the Business Sentiment Survey because I had promised to give you an update. Now, we did a survey in June of 2021 and released those results and built the tools that go with it. And then we administered another one in December 2021. So overall, businesses on the eastern shore have a very positive outlook for the next 12 months. But while their outlook is positive, it has dipped some since June of 2021. I think that's predictable. We were coming right out of COVID and things, you know, were, people were very enthusiastic about the outlook. And now, you know, they've moderated just a little bit or have, and they haven't really dipped. And I'll show you that slide in just a moment. But what they're telling us is that problems exist in the business community. And respondents say that COVID-19 both created new problems and exacerbated existing ones. And of course, it's fairly predictable what those are. Labor force leads the way. It remains stubbornly atop the list of barriers to both starting and expanding a business according to our business respondents. And then, of course, inflation is a growing concern. And it overtook supply chain. As the supply chain issues are beginning to moderate a little bit, people are concerned about inflation and what that will do. A tight-fisted consumer does not spend money, and inflation can cause that. Here's the slide I was talking about. We have compared June 2021 to December 2021. You can see people were expecting things to be much better. Still, a very positive outlook and even more positive for your county, our county and on the eastern shore. Now, are these survey results because they're the entire eastern shore? Are they applicable to Talbot County? Well, yes, they are. So you can see that 43% of the people in the entire eastern shore who took this survey are located in Talbot County. And I want to thank my businesses who operate in Talbot County for taking the survey and for taking the time. It's a 50-question survey. But this gives us a lot of great information. It gives you good information. If there are additional questions that you think we can delve into with what we've already got, then I'm more than happy to look into those for you. And then, of course, marketing and communications is a lot of what we do. So we have the Talbot Works website. The most viewed page over the last two years, of course, has been COVID-19 resources. But it's really important to note that we were successful in taking online applications for all of our grants. And then our blog is very popular. The Talbot Works newsletter, our featured business story is always the most popular. And we have written about everything from Spurri Current to the New Ferry Cove, to Seawatch International, to Clarence. We really have some fantastic businesses in this county, and we are telling their story through our newsletter. And we do one every month. And of course, we keep up with social media posts and the platforms that are best suited for economic development are Facebook and LinkedIn. And we have a growing presence on both. And of course, we did the private sector calls all through COVID, and we ended those in June. And we now do them only on an as-needed basis. A couple of weeks ago, we had Dr. McGuire speak directly to the business community about the spike in COVID cases. So what's ahead for 2022? Well, we'll be doing public outreach with our Eastern Shore Economic Recovery Project. And so we'll be going into the communities and sharing that information, also into the businesses and other organizations that will have us speak to share this information. And we have a plan for how to do that. And this project ends in June of 2022, at the end of June. And we'll be doing that public outreach as soon as we're able to safely hold public meetings. And then, of course, we continue to actively seek resources for our businesses. I had a long call with USDA this week about some of the resources they have. They have new loan programs. We're expecting a value-added marketing grant program to be released soon. So keeping up on that, sharing that information, and also directly connecting people to the resources when I know it's applicable to their business. And then, of course, you know, and economic development, retention, expansion, and attraction are what we are supposed to do. That we will continue to focus on that and return to focusing on that as we get out of the grant-giving business and into what we're supposed to be doing. So I'm gonna stop with that. One last thing, I do want to welcome Mr. Raza Jafari, who is my board chairman, and he is on the phone. He's in DC and is unable to join us on the video, but he is listening in and watching. And so I wanted to welcome him and thank him for attending tonight. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Great job, Cassandra. And we want to welcome Raza too. So he's a big part too, and we love him. Mr. DiVillio.
No, no questions at this time. That's a lot.
It's a lot, you know. Mr. Pax.
I don't have any questions either. A great presentation. We had a different slide set than the one that was presented. So we'll have to get that so we can take a look at it further. Thank you.
So I'll apologize for that. That is the full report on the Business Sentiment Survey. So that's just additional information, and I will provide my slides to you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Lesher.
Just a note that I want to express my appreciation for having that full text of the outcomes of the Business Sentiment Survey and what you are doing to stay on top of both monitoring the situation in the county, but also that activate to our businesses. I do recall I was, I was still in the Eastern Town Council a number of years ago when we, when Easton and the county collaborated in paving the way for Afina Pharmaceuticals' expansion. And we were told then that this was going to result in at least 150 new jobs. And it seems like we've already exceeded that goal. Very encouraging for those really quality jobs that this program has brought to the community. Nice to see a program like that from the early stages to full fruition in the community. And as you said, it's going to continue to get, they're continuing to hire. That's great news indeed.
Absolutely. We should go and take a tour soon. It's really fantastic, A, to see what they've added, but also just to see how they do, what they do. It's, you know, very high-tech. And they have contracts with some of the large companies to package their contract manufacturer or contract packaging manufacturer and also manufacturing RX for, you know, disbursement through the drug system. So it's really interesting to see. We'll get a tour over there soon.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Ms. Price?
Hey there. If you look at that result of that survey and you see that 43% came from Talbot County out of all those counties, and you don't think that Talbot County and Miss Cassandra Van Hooser are forced to be reckoned with, and you clearly aren't seeing. It's just amazing to get that kind of feedback. And hopefully, the other, if we ever do this again or whatever, the other counties, you know, will see that, how important that information is to have to be able to support our businesses and see where the problems are. And, you know, it's unfortunate the other counties just didn't, I mean, hopefully, they'll look at ours and be able to use that information. But without the participation, it's not as meaningful for them. But it is very meaningful for us. And you work hard at, you work hard at everything. But you really work hard at getting that survey out there and encouraging our businesses to participate. So along with everything else, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Say that you do work very hard. Appreciate all you working with. With Mary Kay and Ms. Neal, and it really is a really nice team there. So you guys work well together to help a lot of people and a lot of businesses. So we definitely need all three of you big time. So appreciate everything you've done the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Okay, Council. All right. So now we're on to a public hearing, okay? Council, Madam Secretary, would you read the Bill 1496 into the record, please?
Bill number 1496 of Bill to repeal and reenact Chapter 102, Parks and Recreation Talbot County Code, and to enact a new Chapter 76 entitled Golf Board.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Thomas, are you with us?
I am, yes.
Okay, could you, a little bit, if you want to comment on this legislation? It'd be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. So we discussed this bill length in a work session, I think, last, summer or last fall. And this version incorporates all of the changes that we discussed at that work session. It provides some clarification regarding the regulations in Section 102-5. It also puts the provisions regarding the golf board, which are unchanged from their current version in a new chapter of the code to avoid any confusion regarding these regulations, the applicability of these regulations that I just mentioned, 102-5. So it's, but like I said, incorporates all the changes that we previously discussed.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's good. All right, so at this time, Mr. Pax, can you be my timekeeper if we need to, please?
Sure. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on 1496 for the public. And I'll give you three minutes to speak as an individual and five minutes to speak on, if you, on behalf of an organization. Mr. Durham, is there, is there any, anybody on the line and participants that want to talk about 1496?
There is no one on to unmute.
Everybody there. So I will, I guess at this point, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Callahan? Because we're meeting virtually and things, we just changed that last month. I was wondering if we could leave comment open until the next meeting. That way, I assume that we would get written comment mostly on this, if any. But just give them some opportunity to do that.
For public comment? Okay, that's fine. So I think, Madam Secretary, was this, was this ready to be voted on tonight for the third reader?
It could be unless Mr. Thomas says otherwise.
Well, if we're going to leave public comment open, don't we want to hold off on that?
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. I just wanted to let everybody know that it was ready for final vote. But if you want to leave it and just wait till next meeting, that way people can, you know, comment on it. Is that okay with Council?
I don't think we can, at the point of order, Mr. Callahan, I don't think we can vote on it the same as the public here because this is a bill. But I think, I think.
I'm sorry, just to clarify. Yeah, so this is the second reader tonight, which is also the public hearing. So the third reader would be at the next meeting and vote.
Okay, all right, that's good. Okay, I'm corrected. No problem. Okay, so we'll leave it open in next meeting to be for the third reader. That'd be great. So, okay. Are we good, Madam Secretary, on that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Okay, next, you can help us out on discussion on pending general assembly legislation. I think we have a couple that are, that we have. So would you, would you mind reading the first one?
Okay, hold on.
No problem.
I'm not sure which order they're in, in Granicus, but one of the bills is Senate Bill 288, Talbot County Board of Education Election of Officers. And it relates to, the bill is for the purpose of altering the timing of the annual election of the officers of the Talbot County Board of Education and generally relating to the Talbot County Board of Education and the election of officers.
Or you want to comment on this and know a little bit about this bill? Ms. Price?
Yep, I'm getting there. I think we saw this last year, or they wanted to do this last year, and something happened with the timing. But if I remember correctly, this is, people get sworn in and other counties are all sworn in, and we haven't changed our officers. So I think this is literally just a change from January to December so they are able to vote on their president in December, right after getting sworn in, as opposed to having to wait an extra month. So this is just literally a date change.
So how, how Council feel about supporting me with that?
Well, I looked at the fiscal and policy note that was prepared by the legislative analyst on this. It noted, as Mrs. Price says, only a change of date in the election of officers. No negative impacts were identified with this. And this seems like a sensible and easy bill to support. I would, I would certainly join in a lot of support on this one.
Did we receive any? Did we receive any comment from either the election, the Board of Education Chairwoman or anyone from the Board of Education on this bill?
I did not receive any in this office, no.
Okay.
I can't imagine, was this generated at their request?
That was my point, Mr. Lesher. I would like to know who put this on for us to give way in or whether it was from the
Senator Eckert's office asked us.
And she, was she asked to do this by our board, Board of Education?
Introduced on behalf of the Talbot County Board of Education.
Okay, all right. So any other Council member want to speak on this? Or are we good to support this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to support.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pax, did you have a question?
No, I was just saying, I support it. I just saw the email.
I didn't, I didn't catch it. Okay, we got a motion and second it. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pax?
Aye.
Yep. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the next one, please? Next bill into the record?
The next one is House Bill six thirty-three, Education Accountability and Implementation Board Membership. Um, this bill is for the purpose of altering the membership and qualifications of members of the Accountability and Implementation Board, requiring the Accountability and Implementation Board Nominating Committee to submit a certain slate of nominees to the governor on or before a certain date, and generally relating to the membership of the Accountability and Implementation Board. I believe it has to do with the, um, Accountability and Implementation Board of the, uh, to provide geographic diversity to membership on the Maryland Kerwin's Commission.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Yep, Ms. Price?
Well, yeah, this was, um, previously there was only seven members that were going to be appointed to this board by the governor, um, and they did not get adequate representation at all. This has been, uh, the, the introduction is by about, gosh, fifteen or more members from these more rural jurisdictions, but, uh, incredibly, they were also missing one of the larger jurisdictions. So this expands the membership from seven members to eleven members, and will add, uh, a member now from Eastern Shore, a member from Western Shore, and a member from Southern Maryland, in addition to the one remaining large jurisdiction that didn't have representation. Um, and so, uh, we absolutely should support this. I mean, Kerwin is a big ticket item, as we know, and, you know, when you're increasing the, the cost by that much money, you want to make sure that you have representation from every, um, maybe not every single county, but certainly every single jurisdiction, regional area. So that, this is a great, this is a great bill, and I think we really need to support this.
Okay, Ms. Price, I pre- I appreciate that. Counsel, any comments?
I, I'll follow up on that, and, um, I, I'm extremely proud of our schools here in Talbot County. Uh, I love the Eastern Shore, Talbot County the most, uh, and I think that Talbot County is my favorite county in the state. I think we do many things much better here than the rest of the state. Uh, but I, I certainly wouldn't tell them that I think that we should have all eleven from Talbot County, just because I think we do everything right. But that's essentially what they did, and they, uh, put up a vertical line and said, everybody right in here is going to tell everybody else in the state how to run their schools and implement this stuff. So, uh, shame on them for that behavior. Uh, it's, uh, diversity does help, and by geographical diversity, it, it will make improvements. So, uh, I do, I am willing to support this, and I'd go as far as saying that maybe all five should be from Talbot County, but I won't say that. So I'm happy to support this in the way it's written.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeVio. Any other council member? Okay, um, Madam Secretary, um, do we, do we have, um, do we have a motion on this?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we send the letter in support.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second. Uh, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Hey, counsel, okay, good job on that. I appreciate that, uh, Ms. Price, and bringing that stuff to our attention and, and being on top of that. Appreciate it. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Stamp, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel, President, members of the council. I have a number of things for you this evening under report, and committee appointments, the first item I have is requested is regarding the Short Term Rental Review Board. We're requesting the appointment of Ms. Michelle LaRoca and Mr. Keith Watts to serve on the Short Term Rental Review Board.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next item refers to the Board of Appeals. We're requesting the reappointment of Louis Dorsey as a full-time member, appointment of Jeffrey Adelman as a full member, and Patrick Forrest as an alternate member.
Remove.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next, uh, next one will be the Tourism Board requesting the appointment of Mary Kellogg to the Tourism Board.
Remove.
I'll make a motion, please.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And counsel, we have a request from the Department of Pub, uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation, utilize FY twenty-two contingency funds for the purchase of a John Deere compact utility tractor, approved in the FY twenty-one budget. As you can read in your agenda packet, we're requesting the approval to utilize, utilize twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars in contingency funds for the purchase of a John Deere two, twenty-twenty-nine R compact utility tractor for, from Atlantic Tractor. This was originally budgeted FY twenty-one, however, due to a supply chain issue, the tractor was not available until now. Joining Angel, your finance director, has confirmed contingency funds are available for this purpose.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, by tractor. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And counsel, we have Rich Sutter, your golf course manager, here with us this evening. Uh, this is a request from the Hognet Golf Course for fee increases for the twenty-twenty-two season, um, and he is here to discuss that with you this evening. Mr. Sutter?
Evening, everybody.
Evening.
Good evening.
Okay.
Yep, all good.
All right, great day for golf. We reopened today.
Nice, all right.
Well, we were only open for four days in January, a little bit of a bad weather month there. It's the last time I leave Chuck Callahan in charge of the weather for January. I'm calling right now.
I got you.
So the rates, um, when I go and look at rates, I look at the rates at River Marsh for the new year. I look at the rates at Queenstown, our two competitors. We like to make sure that we, uh, fit in underneath those two competitors. So looking at just a basic hundred-dollar increase across the board for the annual membership fees, and then only raising two rates in the daily fees, uh, five dollars additional on the weekend in the mornings, and five dollars additional midday in the mornings. I think the rest of the rates position us, uh, right where we need to be. As most of you know, four years ago, when I started, we were woefully underselling the golf course, and that's why we were struggling financially. And, uh, now we've got those back up where they need to be, and I, I think we're positioning the marketplace for another great year.
Okay, okay, Rich, um, like you said, um, you've been on there for four years, and we can't thank you enough for all that hard work and bringing us up to, uh, um, par on all these fees and everything. And you're doing, you and your team out there are doing a spectacular job, that's for sure. So, um,
Thank you, sir.
Seriously, you just said on par, bringing the rates up on par? That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I, yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
He's a wordsmith.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Anybody else want a golf club?
Now, I, while we're just on here, real quick, I'd, I'd like to say, Rich, you've done a fantastic job with the selection and the pro shop, from golf balls to shirts to everything. If anybody in the community is looking for any golf goods, I would highly recommend going out there first. Post any big box stores, support your local golf course. They've got some great selection in there.
I, I would agree, I, I would agree, and the new logo and all that stuff, you know, how, how is the new logo? Is it, is it selling pretty good?
It sells great to the men. I think the ladies find it a little intimidating, but, uh,
I got you.
But the men love it.
Yep, well, that's good. Well, good job out there.
I will promise you this year, I will be out there to play the, the executive course a couple of times this year. Um,
I'm going to hold you to it. You, you, this is two or three years in a row, you've made this promise.
I know, I've been, I've been saying, I'm going to get out there, I'm going to get out there. I, I think I'm, I'm, if not now, nervous. I'll, I'll, I'll make it out there.
That's good. All right, um, um, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the new rates.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second, Madam Secretary, to go up a little bit on the rates, um, at the golf course. Um, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Uh, so just, uh, just to, to wrap up the county manager report, you know, I, I, I just want to take a moment to recognize and thank the council for your leadership. You wrestle with some difficult things day in and day out, but when you see, uh, Mary, Mary Kay, you see Marilyn Neal, you see Cassandra, you know, you, the public, you know, just needs to be reminded that, under your leadership for the last two years, staff, organizations, and community have come together and are still working, uh, to wrestle with serious issues related to, uh, individuals' ability to frankly survive. Our, our EMS workers are on the front line, healthcare workers, and, and, you know, we've been, we've been working hard to coordinate, uh, relief, and I just want to recognize the council for your leadership, as well as all the organizations on, in our community, because it's something truly to be proud of in our community. And, uh, I think sometimes it's easy to just kind of forget that, uh, and I just wanted to, you know, remind the community that there's a lot of passionate people out there that are working really hard, uh, for a great community, community that we have. And in closing, uh, Mr. Counsel, President, members of the councils, um, the, uh, county offices will be closed on Monday, the twenty-first of twenty-twenty-two for President's Day, and this concludes the county manager report. Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Stamp. Well said, and I would agree with you wholeheartedly that with our team around us and staff and, um, all the great people that, that helped the community and the council, doing a fantastic job. Okay, let's move on to, uh, public comment. Uh, Mr. Durham, do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Okay. Let's move on to council comment. Start off with Mr. Pack.
Very good, thank you very much, Mr. Callahan. Uh, I just want to keep on urging citizens to, uh, continue getting your COVID tests and your vaccination. I, I went out to the Academy's building today, want to thank the state, uh, National Guard for manning that station. Uh, I was in and out in a matter of five minutes. So, um, you may have been tested once before, um, we know, we just came through, or just trying to get through this, this flu season, uh, and as we go into the spring and you start making your vacation plans, um, please, sir, please, madam, uh, go in and get yourself tested. Let's all keep each other safe. Uh, so I want to stress that and thank, again, the, uh, National Guard for manning that station at Cadmus. And I want to also continue, uh, encouraging people to, to go over and get yourself vaccinated. Dr. McGuire and her team over at, uh, uh, the former, uh, um, video store here in town, where it used to be the Hearthstone, uh, uh, Gymnasium, uh, Jim, uh, have set up that shop for vaccinations, and so, and, and again, they're, they're very efficient, get you in, get you out in a matter of minutes. So these things are all free, uh, don't cost you, uh, about a couple moments of your time. If you know your name, your address, your date of birth, you're good to go. So, um, I just want to, uh, end on that note, just encouraging people to continue getting yourself vaccinated and continue keeping yourself tested. Um, as we're approaching this endemic somewhere along the way, COVID is going to be with us. It's, it's going to be with us, a fact of life, in my opinion. Um, so let, let's take the proper precautions and, uh, get ourselves tested and vaccinated. And with that, uh, thank counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Pack, appreciate it. Um, Ms. Price?
That'd be great. Um, I just wanted to say that a bill that, uh, is one of Maker's Initiatives, which is the Emergency Transport, um, I had the test, opportunity to testify on the Senate side today, uh, did the House side a few weeks ago, and it just went really well. We just weren't sure about putting this on our initiatives, that it wouldn't pass. And again, I have no idea if it's going to pass, but the, based on the questions and seemed to be the mood of the committee, uh, the testimony went really well, the follow-up questions were, uh, you know, seemed to be supportive, and there weren't actually a lot of, of, uh, follow-up questions. There was no opposition. So fingers crossed, this would be really, really huge, uh, to get these, uh, go over. Now I'm closed out with that, everybody.
It just went really well.
Okay, Ms. Price, all right, no, no problem.
And again, I have no idea if it's going to pass, but, uh, based on the questions and
You're still talking.
Testimony went really well.
He has a mic open, he was trying to mic off there.
Be supportive, and there weren't actually a lot of, of, uh, follow-up questions. There was no opposition. So fingers crossed, this would be really, really huge, uh, to get these, uh, go over. I had the test, uh, test, now I'm closed out with that, everybody.
It just went really well.
Okay, Ms. Price, all right, no, no problem.
And again, I have no idea if it's going to pass, but, uh,
All right, Mr. DeVio, you're on, you're on.
For fear of that happening to me, I, I'm good for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vice President, how you doing tonight?
Uh, very well. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, provide a brief, uh, update on the American Recovery Plan Act, the ARPA funds that the, the county has received, the first tranche of. Uh, this is seven point two million dollars in, uh, in relief funding, uh, COVID-related, uh, very flexible funding. And to, um, get direction for this, uh, in December and January, we put out a public survey. We got an enormous response to the public survey, uh, in prioritizing these funds, uh, over six hundred responses, if I remember correctly, six hundred and forty-eight. Um, that data has been compiled by one of those, uh, partners that Cassandra was talking about early, the, uh, Beacon, uh, group down in Salisbury. Uh, that has been taken to our staff committee that I am working with. Uh, we will bring that forward to the council, uh, with recommendations, uh, supported by that public, uh, that public feedback, uh, for the, uh, for the allocation of those funds. Um, and, uh, that will be coming up on an upcoming agenda. Moreover, all of the, um, all of the, 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 the survey results will, uh, will be made public as well. So, uh, all of that, uh, all of that in the interest of, uh, transparency and updating you on what we're doing. Uh, we're, we're making good progress on that, and we will be bringing forth recommendations to the full council shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, appreciate it. Um, and I'll, uh, I'll, uh, sum it up by saying that, um, last couple nights, um, councils worked really hard. Um, we had a meeting last night with, uh, the town of Trap and, and, and the public, and went very, very well. I want to commend, uh, council on doing a good job, and I appreciate it. Um, and tonight, just like Mr. Stamp said, um, we have a lot of great people that are helping a lot of great people in the public, and being able to, um, keep their homes, um, nurture their kids, um, provide housing. So thi- this council's doing some good work, um, and I appreciate everything. And Ms. Price, I appreciate, uh, you had a great article in the paper, uh, Sunday, and you're doing a good job up there for us. Um, and on that note, um, Mr. Vice President, can you, uh, can you wrap it up for us?
Uh, county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-second, beginning at six o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at three o'clock PM for a work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a large-scale solar array project, and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Uh, therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
Still moved. Okay, got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, could you close the meeting, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Yeah, I think she's off her phone now.
Sound issues, yeah.
All right, all right, all right. Right, thank you, coun- I think she's off her phone now.
Sound issues, yeah.
Aye, aye, aye. Right, thank you, counsel.